I'd like to call to order the Temple City, um, city council meeting, December 18th, 2018. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Here.
Councilmember Yu is absent, Mayor Pro Tem Fish.
Here.
Mayor Mann is absent.
Motion to excuse, uh, Councilmember Yu and Mayor Mann for cause.
Second. Okay, we're gonna be moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Boy Scout Troop 161 will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Scouts presenting the colors are Cory Nguyen, Jared Do, and Lucas Tay. Uh, what is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Troop 161 will be camping overnight for their urban campout on Colorado Boulevard on December 31st. Good luck. This year, this year Eagle Scout, uh, Jo- Joseph Chin from Troop 161 will be participating as a banner carrier in the 2019 Rose Parade. Please stand.
Cog yard, attention. Cog yard, front and center. Cog yard, for march. All. Cog yard, please, first of all. Gentlemen, will you join me in Pledge of Allegiance? Ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cog yard, perform. Cog yard, retreat. All. Cog yard, dismissed.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna be moving on to public comments. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of this agenda. This section is limited to, oh, 30 minutes. Okay, and we have Vivian Harris.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, do I have to say my name and address and stuff? Yes, my name is Vivian Harris, I live at 4842 Ryland Avenue in Temple City. And I'm here not to lodge a complaint. I might later this, next year, but not this year. Um, I'm here to thank you personally, all council members and the staff that helped in this issue, I don't know them. Gracias, xie xie. I was delighted to read and to hear about, um, our city's lawsuit against the city of Elmani regarding its, at that time, eight medical marijuana businesses planned. Their permits are probably being approved tonight at that city council meeting, uh, but I'm delighted also to hear that our mayor and another council member are there representing us. I am married to a lawyer, um, so I, I value that there's, a lawsuit at least gives me a little hope to poke any holes, anything that can be done to, um, reduce the scale and the scope of those businesses that are being planned. On behalf of myself and some of my neighbors, only a few who were able to come with me tonight, we're very grateful for your efforts to oversee, um, for your efforts to oversee the permitting process and to voice any air quality, AQMD, traffic, general safety concerns that we had already raised a year ago at those meetings. But to raise them again over those, uh, over the medical cannabis businesses being planned in Elmani, south of Lower Zusa, roughly anywhere between Art and Drive and Temple City Boulevard and north of the railroad tracks. That's my neighborhood and some of your neighborhoods. Other neighbors, or I spoke to Tom Chavez, Nanette Fish, and city manager Brian Cook last year. We sent letters and emails to all of you over a year ago, hoping to enlist your support in opposing the marijuana farms, labs, and distribution sites being planned then in Elmani. We and a lot of Elmani residents who were totally against this business model and location next to our homes and to schools, lost that battle. But we were able to get the proximity to schools and homes pushed back or extended a little bit, and so that was good. It worked. Thank you for listening to us then and now. I don't care if it's because of the Mandarin or Chinese media, or because of your letters, or because somebody said, please help us. I don't care what worked. Stay in there, keep fighting. I wish you good luck with that lawsuit, and please keep the pressure on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item seven, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second. Okay, item eight, public hearing. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number 181032, amending Title IX, Chapter One of the Temple City Municipal Code.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, we are recommending that this be continued to a date certain, being the second meeting in January, uh, which is January 15th of 2019.
Okay, um, do I need a roll call for that? Do I need a motion?
Make a motion, though. If I make a motion, if we continue this matter to, uh, January 15th, 2019.
Second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fish.
Yes.
Okay, so moved, thank you. Item B, Temple City High School focused traffic engineering analysis at the intersection of Lemon Avenue and Temple City Boulevard, and Lemon Avenue and Tre Lini Avenue.
I'm gonna give a very quick introduction on this before I hand it over to Mr. Arizumi. Uh, the council may remember back on November 6th, uh, that you considered this matter and discussed different options, uh, for improvements around Temple City High School. And the council gave direction at that time to pursue an option that included removal of a crosswalk. Uh, removal of a crosswalk requires a public hearing, so we are back here tonight, uh, to take that procedural step. So this is based on the decision and direction that you previously gave. Brian?
Okay, do we have any council comments? Tom?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public hearing. I have Zo- Zoe? You?
Good evening, city council and city staff, thank you for your time tonight. I just wanna make a quick comment about my own experience with this crosswalk. I use this crosswalk almost every day, either in the morning or the afternoon, and before they started hiring crossing guards this year, I felt very unsafe because cars did not stop for me practically 90% of the time. So I'm very happy that these proposed changes might happen. And also, I would like to acknowledge that you members of the youth committee have collected signatures from students and adults who are in support of the relocation of the crosswalk. We collected over hundred signatures, almost 200. And then I would also like to share a comment from my classmate who could not be here tonight. His name is June, is Bennett G. I experienced an accident last year in November of 2017 when I was biking to school in the morning and was hit at the intersection of Lemon and Temple City on the southwest corner. The car was making a right turn as I biked forward and we collided. It wasn't serious, and I was just knocked over with small scratches. I feel that the improvements to the intersections at Lemon and Tre Lani, as well as Lemon and Temple City, are critical to student safety. With incidents like mine and others occurring, it is evident that changes need to be made. I believe these changes would improve the conditions of daily commute. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, I'm gonna close public comments. Additional council comments?
Uh, I would just like to, um, thank, of course, TransTech and our staff for all their hard work and recommendations in this matter. I know Brian's been working on it. And of course, to our youth committee, who has really recognized the need in the city and, and have developed a solution and working for the first time with, uh, staff and, and our, our, um, TransTech professionals. And I, I think it's been a great experience for them. I, I've hoped they've enjoyed it, I know they're excited about it. And again, I just wanna thank them and, and commend them for, for taking an interest in the city this way because, uh, you know, we, we kinda preach to them all the time that, that this is your city and, and it's hard for them sometimes to, to understand that, knowing that, uh, sometimes our youth in, in certain areas of our, we don't have a voice. But as you can see now, you guys do have a voice and, uh, and we appreciate all that you've done and, and will continue to do in the future, so, so good job, good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I just wanna thank, um, you again, thanks, Tr- TransTech, I think it's a great solution, and, um, I know we're not voting on it yet, but, um, we're gonna listen to your presentation, Brian.
Okay.
We are.
I think so.
Oh, I didn't know that, I thought that was weird past that point.
Yeah, I thought.
I can answer any questions if any, if there are any.
Sorry, I didn't know we were doing that.
Community Development Director Forbes pretty much summarized what occurred from last meeting to what we're gonna be doing today, other than holding a public hearing.
Okay, do, would you like to hear it again?
Sure. Well, are you, are you just repeating the stuff we heard last time, or is there anything new to add?
It'll be just an overview of what we did last time, but more specifically, it's talking about our, um, requirement for, uh, holding a public hearing for the crosswalk removal. And so, to be in compliance with Wirtschaft ramps, they need to have ADA ramps. Uh, the Eastlake Crosswalk, we discussed, uh, removal because of the number of students crossing from the west side, and it reduces the number of, uh, conflict with pedestrians in the crosswalk. And so, per, uh, following the guidelines of the California Vehicle Code and the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, uh, we have to have a public hearing, and so tonight's meeting will serve as our public hearing for removal. Um, if there are no objections and it's approved by council, we will move forward with, uh, adopting the resolution, implementing the, uh, changes.
Okay, did you, anyone have any other questions? Did you need to add anything else, Brian?
No, just again, hold the public hearing and then adopt the resolution and, um, have a budget amendment completed tonight, uh, to move forward with the proposed improvements.
Okay, um, okay, I guess I just need a council motion.
We need a.
You just need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I open up, uh, public comments? For this item, is anyone wanna speak on this item? Okay, I'm gonna close that.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I would, uh, make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 18 dash 5374 approaching, approving, excuse me, the traffic and pedestrian safety measures recommended by TransTech, and also to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $44,000 to implement the approved traffic and pedestrian safety measures.
Second up. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fish?
Yes. Thank you. Motion moved. And moving on to item nine. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Update from city manager. Did you have anything?
Nothing this evening, just, this is our last meeting of 2018, so happy holidays to everyone, and we will see you next year.
Thank you. You also. Update from city attorney.
Briefly, and this is more for people, uh, in the audience and watching at home, the city charter, uh, says that when a national holiday falls on the date of a meeting, of a regular meeting of the council, the council meeting will be moved to the next day. So your next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, January 2nd, uh, so that we can all celebrate the new year, uh, without coming to a meeting that evening. As Michael said, happy holidays to everyone, and we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Does anyone have anything?
No, no meetings.
Okay. I'm still trying to get a meeting with the school district, I just want you to know, I've gotten a new contact and I'm, I'm working on it, but.
It'll happen, I'm sure.
It'll, it'll happen. Okay, item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilman Chavez?
Thank you, I just have a couple of quick things. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, Fish and I did attend the Walking Nativity this past Sunday evening.
Excellent, excellent.
Uh, I wanna give a shout out to, uh, the churches that participated, uh, the Mideast Event, Event, Evangelical. I had it all pretty out, and then I, yeah, Evangelical Church, Methodist, Baptist, and the Nazarene churches for their participation. It was kind of a first time thing, I think, in the city, and kinda reminded us all of what the season's all about, and, and, uh, they concluded the, their little march, uh, right over here at the park, and had some music, and so it was a very good evening, so thank you all for doing that. Also, um, some of you may have gotten, um, an email today from some local residents, Shane and Christie Sexton, their daughter Alex, uh, was an Aussie ambassador a few years ago. Uh, they're gonna have a fundraiser this Friday and Saturday for the victims of the campfire in Paradise. Um, and they're gonna have, uh, sell some, uh, food and drink and things and take donations if anybody's interested, uh, at their home at 9837 Flaherty here in Temple City. So if anybody, uh, has some time to stop by Friday or Saturday evening and, and contribute, that'd probably be a great thing to do. And lastly, just happy holidays to everyone, I hope everyone enjoys their friends and family this holiday season, and look forward to a new and prop- prosperous year for all of us in the city of Temple City. So thank you so much for all that you've done this year, and, and look forward to a great 2019, so.
Thank you, Councilman Chavez. Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, I attended the mosquito and vector control, 7 o'clock AM meeting on the last Friday, and, um, just wanna say that although West Nile virus is still very present in the San Gabriel Valley, it, this year presented the lowest number of West Nile virus cases in the county. So that's moving in the correct, um, direction, and continue to be reminded that any type of containers, water bowls outside, planters that have the rim, it's time to just turn them over, especially after a rain, and ensure that there's not even a, a small amount of water because mosquitoes thrive in less than a drop of water from an eyedropper. So just a reminder for that, um, this morning I had the opportunity to attend a much longer, uh, meeting, it was almost five hours, but it was with Foothill Transit, and it was a really interesting study on the electrification of buses and vehicles, and there were members from alley metro, um, just a supervisor's office, just a wide variety of people that are interested in where transportation is heading. And the goal for Foothill Transit as an agency was to be all-electric by 2030. Now the goal across the USA is to be all-electric by 2040. So today's study, um, had representatives from Edison. There's so much infrastructure that needs to take place in order for that to happen, and there's a constraint on real estate, the different, um, size properties that, um, electric buses will need, whether the electricity is going to be hooked up from the top or from the side. It was just really, really interesting. Not a lot of solutions, just a lot of ideas, but, um, when they mentioned that in 20 years from now, the whole San Gabriel Valley, as far as, uh, buses, will be electric buses, I was thinking, oh my goodness, I'll be like 80-something then, but, um.
Maybe you'll be taking a bus.
I'm, I think I might be taking a bus, but, um, it, it, it is exciting, even at this point in my life, to hopefully, knock on wood, when I am 80-something years old, to be able to sit back and look at all-electric vehicles in the San Gabriel region and.
So they're talking about putting, uh, electric lines above?
They're not electric.
Isn't that like the old days, when we had the trolley cars?
No, because they're not electric lines, they're actually like charging stations, and so I call it a contraption, that's kinda what it looks like. It's like a long extended arm that would go up and over and then attach to the top of the bus and charge it from there.
Oh, well, it's not while it's driving.
Not while it's driving, they're in charging stations, and actually, one charging bus would then be able to continue all the way down, so you don't need individual contraptions on top of each bus, but so much power will go into the first bus, which is mind-blowing, and then hence, go down the, the row and be able to hopefully charge another 50 buses.
Does Foothill Transit work with Metro? Are they two different entities entirely?
Yes.
And so, do they talk to each other? Because I know Metro is working on a lot of stuff, and, and, uh, I would think that they would compare notes, I think you indicated that they were there today.
They do, and actually, Metro has an, it's called an Office of Extraordinary Innovation, and many of the Foothill, the younger people that. and many of the Foothill, the younger people that enter transportation seem to get their footing at Foothill Transit and then move into Metro, because there's a lot more management opportunities, and Metro is so huge in comparison to Foothill Transit. But two separate organizations, but they do very much work closely together on issues like electric buses.
And Foothill Transit is the- they control our area, right? But do we have any other bus lines in our area besides Foothill Transit?
We have Metro.
And Metro, just those two?
Yes, and then our dialer, right, of course. But I will like to say that this was the kickoff week of Duarte, the city of Duarte, partnering with Foothill Transit. And so the city of Duarte now has two electric buses in the city that they've worked out an arrangement with Foothill Transit, and Duarte is really, really excited about having them-
Do they only run in the city of Duarte?
Only in the city of Duarte, yes. So I'm sure as time goes on and we see how this partnership with Duarte works out, that we might be able to take a look at it and see if there's something we might like to do in our own city. You know, I'm still very excited about the Uber program hopefully taking off in the next couple of months, and that will definitely-
Service-
I mean Lyft, I'm sorry. Yeah. The Lyft program. But anyway, that's all, just a blessed Christmas to everyone. I'm sorry I missed the nativity scene. I had the pleasure of attending my niece's daughter, Clarabelle, who sang at, once for us at the council meeting. She goes to Mayfield Senior School, and their choir sang at San Marino Community Church, and it was, talk about like being close to listening to angels sing. It was the most beautiful event, listening to fifty girls sing from the women's choir, and the instrumental pieces were gorgeous. So I was very proud to be there and enjoyed that. But everyone have a great holiday season and a happy new year. And thank you so much for coming, sending your note, Vivian, taking the time to say thank you to us. I mean, it's just lovely to get this, and I hope that everyone in the audience and, you know, obviously, our mayor and Vincent Yu are there this evening representing the full council. We're just, you know, we just want to support our residents and want to make sure that even when things are done in our surrounding cities, that we're vocal and have a say in them, and we're going to do as much as we can. But thank you again for that, and to your neighbors for coming this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Sternquist. I have just a couple of things. I had the honor of attending a private meeting with our new sheriff, Helen Wilber, with Contract Cities Executive Board. It was very nice, it was only about fifteen people, so we actually got to speak freely and tell him our concerns, and he was able to share a few plans. And I'm really excited about it. Couple of things that he has shared with us, as he is going completely redo the promotion procedures for promoting within the department, which will give a bigger pool. He thinks he can get more qualified people to fill this upper management slots, such as lieutenants and captains, which we were very excited about. The other thing, which is a true concern with Contract Cities always, is local control. And he has promised us that anytime there is a new captain, that he is going to now involve the city councils of the captain, yes, in that community. So we will be able, he's not sure if it'd be an ad hoc or maybe one person, to help with the interviews. So we're very excited about it, because usually the city councils don't have anything to do with the placement of the captains. We find out after they've been assigned, and then they come to a meeting and we're introduced. Now we'll be able to actually be involved in the interview process, which I think is very exciting, because we'll be able to see if these people fit with our community. Because lots of times, the promotions are done, and it's not a bad thing, but they're done with deputies that are from sometimes larger communities who aren't familiar with Temple City. So I'm really excited about it, really, really excited about it. And then lastly, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Did he just come by our badges?
You know, it's funny you say that, because I did mention to one of the sergeant, or one of the lieutenants, I said, you know, we used to get badges, and he said, yeah, I heard somebody really messed that up for you guys. And I said, yeah, and he goes, were they real badges? And I said, yeah, they were real badges. So, yeah, I did mention. I tried to get them back.
Didn't you lose yours one time? I think-
I didn't lose it.
Someone took it out of your-
It was taken out of the-
At the car wash.
At the car wash in El Monte when I realized, I always kept it, not even in my glove compartment. I don't do- keep anything under my seats now, but it was underneath my passenger seat, so it was always underneath the mat, and I didn't even realize until I was home and I went to snap the mat, and nothing was there. I went to move it in. I went back, I called them, I went back, and they said that, of course, nobody had seen it, but that badge was circulating in El Monte, so with my name on it, I think. Did it have our names on it?
I just say that in jest.
Yeah.
I never knew what to do with it anyway.
Did they have our names on them?
They did have our- no, they didn't have our names on them.
No, okay.
The ID did-
Oh, council member, it said council member.
I did find out, though, that a lot of our surrounding cities, their council members do not have sheriff IDs. I don't know why. They were like, how did you get that? I said, I don't know.
Because they didn't know about it, now they know.
Well, now they all want it.
Brian got them for it.
Yeah, Brian got them for us, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was a very, very interesting meeting, and like I said, I was, I thought it was going to be another meeting where there's a hundred people, a meet and greet for a hundred people, and it was a meet and greet for fifteen, so it was great. I mean, we got to actually talk to him freely. It was wonderful.
What is that, a four-year term? I think it's a four-year term, I'm going to see.
So I'm excited.
They were very generous, Contract Cities, and you got an invitation too, Tom.
To what?
To attend. They send it to all their membership today.
I think I did.
Yeah, so that was-
It was very nice.
Please thank them for giving us the opportunity, even though we didn't go, but-
It was very nice. And then it was followed by a reception. Like I said, the reception, that's where-
Where was it held?
It was held at, in downtown LA, obviously, on Olive. It was a-
Wasn't it the station?
Jorge Morales works there, it's his office.
Oh.
Okay, his lobbyist, right?
Right, a lobbyist office, South Gate, council member. So it was beautiful, of course, except it was in downtown LA, but what are you going to do?
Good.
I'm not a fan of downtown LA. Anyway, we're going to move on to additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Steve?
Mayor Protemper Fish, council members, city staff, I just came from the meeting in El Monte. It's over fifteen hundred people there. I couldn't even get a speaker card.
Did they throw you out?
What?
Did they throw you out?
No.
Oh, good.
I had to walk away. I had to sit on the ground. I can't stand on my knees with my torn meniscus. I asked them to get me in, they wouldn't even do that. The officers were treating people very poorly. Before I left to go, there's already been three people injured. I told them that the best thing to do is to reschedule this meeting over at the high school where they have the bleachers there on the football field. You know, they don't have the big room like we do at their parks.
Are their council meetings videotaped?
I couldn't hear you.
They are.
Oh, they are? Oh, I didn't-
Yeah, yeah.
Is it live, like ours? Do you know it?
I don't know. Nobody knows. They don't even have TVs out there where the crowd is. We don't even know, I don't even, I couldn't tell you right now if the meeting started. They've done this so poorly. The police chief comes out, sees me sitting, doesn't even ask me if I'm okay. Some guy tried to pick a fight with me while I was sitting down. It's really bad. It's not the way to run it.
We're glad you made it back safely, back in Temple City.
Yeah, but I'm just telling you guys that the city attorney, Greg, you need to take action on the city for doing it this way. I have a right to speak. They have violated your, the people in this city's right to speak by doing it the way they're doing it. They violated, they're violating handicapped people. They don't seem to care, they seem to think it's a joke. They're supposed to bring me a speaker card. I waited an hour and a half. They said, oh, we'll bring you one, never happened.
Greg, just out of curiosity, I thought that-
Steve.
No, Greg, I was asking Greg. Don't confuse me.
What are you talking about?
I thought for some reason, I don't know what, that cities can limit the amount of speakers. Is that true? Or is it just the amount of time?
It's the amount of time. So the two things you can do if you have a very large number of speakers, and we've done some of this in the past, you can limit the amount of time. For example, a year and a half ago, we had a large hearing where instead of the normal three minutes, we limited it to two minutes. In addition, if you have, again, a large number of speakers and people are going to be repetitive, and they might have one person who can speak for a large group, you could give that person a bit of extra time, five or six minutes, to coherently speak for a large group of people-
Right.
-on a number of points, and then the large group also kind of donates their time and agrees not to speak. So there are ways to control a situation like that, so that everybody does have a chance to be heard or to have their points spoken for them by a representative.
They're not even doing that. There's going to be people, probably five hundred to six hundred, that won't even be able to speak. They don't even have enough speaker cards. Like I told you guys, I asked for a speaker card when I got there. I asked five times, I waited an hour. Officer comes out, are you okay? I'm in pain from my knees, sitting down, and they just, they're not running this properly. That's why, Greg, I'm asking you to take some action on this city for our citizens here that won't have a right to speak, because they didn't do the best way to do this. The best way is the football field at El Monte High School. The weather's fine for it, it would have been fine for it tonight. There's no reason they couldn't have done that. There's no reason why they shouldn't do it now. You know, I can tell you this, the chief wants it to go through, he doesn't care, care about the people that don't want it. He's made that perfectly clear to me. And the city manager should have been out there, somebody should have been out there addressing the crowd. That's why they got rowdy once while I was there, and like I said, there's been three people already injured, and the fire departments had to come out there twice. The battalion chief's inside, next thing I would do is alert him that there's problems outside, he can shut it down. This is not the way, this is not being done legally from a legal sense of security, taking care of the handicap, giving the peoples their right to speak. It's totally illegal. I have no doubt, I actually talked to a lieutenant I know, he says, send me over to get a speaker card again, no speaker card. The people, the officers they have there-
Thank you.
-don't know how to do this. Thank you very much, and all of you have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too. Was there anyone else who wanted to address the council? Okay, I just wanted to thank everybody, have a wonderful holiday, and we will see you next year. Meeting adjourned.